Good morning. I'm Dr. Valar Kush, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and I am pleased to call to order the April 15, 2021 Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will open with several comments this morning. First, I want to start with a quick update on the coronavirus. As I'm sure you're all aware, per federal and state directives, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health has paused the use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine at our vaccine clinics on Tuesday and Wednesday. Anyone who had an appointment to receive the J&amp;J vaccine with us has been contacted and given the opportunity to reschedule their appointment for a later date. We've taken inventory of all of our remaining first doses of Pfizer and have updated our clinic schedules accordingly to only distribute Pfizer through next Tuesday, April 20. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices has met to further review the cases in question and assess their potential significance. They plan to meet again in the very near future. We will await further guidance on this matter. Taking a pause to evaluate a potential side effect is exactly how a data-driven scientific process should work, and I hope Pennsylvanians will be reassured by this step. We have to balance speed and safety as we try to get more shots into arms, and this pause gives me confidence that science and safety are guiding that process. As a reminder, if you or family member have any appointment issues, please email covid19@moncopa.org, or you can call our hotline at 833-875-3967. I also just want to remind everyone that we still have plenty of virus out there. Unfortunately, our positivity rate continues to increase. As of yesterday, our 14-day average positivity rate is 8.12% compared with 7.13% from the week prior. So, you know, just please be careful out there. Not surprisingly, as our case numbers go up, so do our hospitalizations. We now have, at least as of yesterday, 213 individuals with COVID-19 hospitalized in a Montgomery County hospital. This is an increase from 206 last week. So, I know that everyone is so tired of this, but we must continue to ask you to wear masks and maintain social distancing and be very careful when you're around people who are not from your home. So, April is National County Government Month, and I would like to take a moment to recognize our county employees. From responding to COVID-19 and other economic challenges to strengthening infrastructure, ensuring public safety, and building vibrant communities, one thing has been clear over the past year: Our Montgomery County employees continue to step up. While counties face many challenges, we have much to be proud of. Selfless county officials and frontline employees have demonstrated bold inspirational leadership and saved countless lives during these extraordinary times. Just this week, our team responded to changing federal and state guidance that impacted our vaccine operations. As always, our team jumped into action to change course while still maintaining services to our residents. We're proud to mark National County Government Month, celebrating the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans. As the third-largest county in the Commonwealth here in Montgomery County, we are extremely proud to be able to continue to serve everyone who lives, works, goes to school, or visits our county. Thank you to all of our employees who've been working tirelessly in service to our residents for the last year. We would not be where we are today without you. Now, moving on to another group of county employees who will get recognition this week, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I want to take a moment to specifically recognize our 911 telecommunications within our Department of Public Safety. Every year, during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel in the public safety community are honored during National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This week, we honor the people in Montgomery County who answer emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and give life-saving assistance to our residents. They can advise how to give CPR, Narcan, even how to deliver a baby, all over the phone. Over the last year, our 115 911 operators responded to 840,000 emergency calls in the county. They operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Thank you again for all the sacrifices you make to create a better and safer world for the public. Your commitment to your profession is appreciated by all of us, the public safety communications community, and the citizens that you serve. If anyone's interested in joining our team, we are currently hiring 911 telecommunications. And to see the job posting, you can visit www.moncopa.org/jobs and navigate to the Public Safety Job Posting section. And now, I'm very pleased to turn this over to Department of Public Safety Interim Director Mike Best and Assistant Director Jen Cass to share more about these dedicated employees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much for your kind words. I'd like to take this opportunity to share some comments from a few of our telecommunicators about what motivates them to continue to serve the residents and field providers in our county. "No matter what I hear on the other side of the phone or radio, a complete stranger is putting all their trust in me to provide professional care and help in what could be the worst day of their lives. Although sometimes the calls that come in are hard to handle, I enjoy being the calm voice on the other end. Just knowing you helped calm someone down is the most rewarding part. And to keep building a network of friends and family from coworkers and field personnel, and to know that we all do this because we truly care and want to make a difference. 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, our employees hear people in pain, feeling sadness, anger, and sometimes joy. They listen to officers who face danger, firefighters who rescue trapped victims, and medics who deliver babies. The majority of the time, they do not know the outcome of the call they just took. Regardless, these professionals continue to provide superb customer service with compassion. I am so very proud of each and every one of them." I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners, our local law enforcement, EMS, and fire agencies, and all the other Montgomery County departments who continue to support us throughout the year. Thank you.
I'd like to continue with what Jen said and also Commissioner Arcoosh. This week actually celebrates so many dedicated people that put themselves out there every day, serving the residents and first responders of Montgomery County. It sometimes feels as if this is a thankless profession. Having been a 911 telecommunicator myself, I empathize with these individuals who serve in this profession. So today, I would like to thank the 911 telecommunications of this department and others out there across this great nation that serve 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, year after year. You are truly on the front lines of many battlefields, whether they are individual battles or collective battles. So, thank you.
Well, thanks to you both, and I know that you're having an award ceremony later this morning, I think while we're still in our meeting. So, please convey the thanks and the congratulations of the commissioners to the team.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I want to move to a bit more serious topic, which is to address the acts of hate and discrimination that we have seen against the members of the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community. Here in Montgomery County, we condemn all acts of hate and violence against AAPI people. Last weekend, I was proud to join with the community gathered at the Montgomery County Courthouse for a vigil mourning the eight victims of the Atlanta-area spa shootings which took place in March. It's important that all of us come together to condemn these hateful acts and show support for AAPI neighbors. I know it can be difficult, but we encourage anyone who has been the victim of a racist or hate-based incident to come forward and report such incidents to local authorities. In addition, we will continue to support legislation in Harrisburg to strengthen the Commonwealth's hate crime laws to protect vulnerable members of our communities. This weekend, another community gathering will be held in western Montgomery County to support Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. I encourage our residents to attend so that we can continue to show our solidarity while condemning discrimination, xenophobia, and violence perpetuated against this community. This outdoor socially-distanced event will be held this Saturday, April 17, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Victory Park, located at Second Avenue and Arch Street in Royersford. I hope that some of you will consider attending. And one final virtual event to announce for tomorrow, Friday, April 16, between 12:00 to 2:00. I'm sorry, it's Friday, April 30, not tomorrow. One more event for Friday, April 30, between 12 and 2. Legal Aid of Southeastern Pennsylvania, together with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Community Connections, are cosponsoring a free virtual birth certificate and ID clinic. If you need a photo ID, social security card, or Pennsylvania birth certificate, this event is for you. The event is free, but you must pre-register by calling 610-275-5400. Again, that's 610-275-5400. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements this morning. The first is with regards to our primary election, which is about a month away now and coming up on May 18. And in this election, we will have several offices on the ballot, including judges at the state level for Supreme Court, Superior Court, and Commonwealth Court, and here locally for the Common Police Court. Also, jury commissioners will be on the ballot, magisterial district judges, judges of elections, inspector of elections, and school district members. Local government will be on this ballot as well, municipal commissioners and council members, mayors, tax collectors, constables, and auditors. Voters have several options to cast their ballot. You can vote by absentee ballot, you can vote by mail-in ballot, or you can vote in person. But no matter how you choose to vote, in order to vote in this election, you must be registered by Monday, May 3. If you voted by mail in November, and you want to continue to vote by mail, you must reapply. And there are a few ways to do this, and the instructions can be found on the Voter Services website at www.moncopa.org/voterservices. There is also a form there to cancel your mail-in ballot request if you've changed your mind and prefer to vote in person going forward. The deadline to request an absentee or mail-in ballot application is May 11 at 5:00 p.m. Our initial batch of 62,000 absentee mail-in ballots will be in the mail by Monday. We are in the process of finalizing secure drop box locations, and the finalized locations and polling locations will be located on the Voter Services website within the next week. Once we complete any polling locations, that will also be posted on the website, and you can confirm your polling location by visiting the Voter Services website and click on the button "Voting in Person." This is also National Park Week, which first started in 1991 and is designed to inspire stewardship and encourage people to get outdoors and explore our nation's parks. It is observed from Saturday, April 17 through Sunday, April 25. Park Week is a great reminder of the wide variety of sites, parks, and programs in Montgomery County available for you to explore in person or online. Montgomery County Parks offer wonderful opportunities for residents and visitors to enjoy various natural resources, participate in educational and recreational opportunities, and appreciate Montgomery County's beautiful and vast landscape. Montgomery County has six parks throughout the county. Each of them has their own distinct features and programming, and you can check out a full list of events on the county's homepage in the calendar section at www.moncopa.org. Please note that special-use permits on our trails will be suspended until further notice in accordance with state guidelines. However, park pavilions will be available to rent as normal, subject to the 250-person limit. Also, rental indoor and some outdoor spaces will be limited to 50% capacity, so please check the particular park's website for the most up-to-date information. And for more information about our parks, please visit www.moncopa and click on Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites on the menu at the top of the page. And if you would like a county map of all of our parks and trails, please email commissioners@moncopa.org or call 610-278-3000. And I believe we'll have an announcement about the Monco Trail Challenge later in the meeting, which is a great way to explore all of our parks and all of our trails as the weather gets warmer. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I want to take a few moments to let everyone know that Montgomery County will hold its annual Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 24. This event is a collaboration between the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office and the Police Chiefs Association of Montgomery County. During this annual event, police across Montgomery County collect unwanted prescription and over-the-counter medications at police stations and select grocery stores across the county. Montgomery County Drug Takeback Day coincides with the Drug Enforcement Agencies nationwide Takeback Day each year. This is a chance for residents to clean after medicine cabinets of unwanted, unused, and expired prescription and over-the-counter medications, and dispose of them easily in a safe, environmentally-friendly way. We encourage residents to dispose of medicine properly, instead of flushing meds or putting them out in the trash, because these are unsafe ways to dispose of prescription and over-the-counter medications. Drug Takeback Day accepts prescriptions and over-the-counter tablets and capsules, inhalers, creams, ointments, nasal sprays, pet medicines, and vaping products. The event does not accept needles or injectable medicine. Last year's Drug Takeback Day collected a record of 10,279 pounds, or five tons, of prescription and over-the-counter medications, which set a new record for the most collected. Again, this event is taking place next Saturday, April 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. To find participating drop-off sites near you, residents can visit www.moncopa.org/DA to see the full details on the District Attorney's landing page. Participating locations include local police departments and select giant food and Wegman stores. If you cannot make it to Drug Takeback Day, unwanted medications can be dropped off and disposed of throughout the year at more than 50 permanent prescription-med-return-drug-disposal boxes located at most police stations across Montgomery County. So again, the website's moncopa.org/DA, and the event is taking place Saturday, April 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Francisco, do we have anyone who would like to give public comment on a matter appearing on the agenda?
Thank you. We will use the Raise Your Hand feature. For those logged in today, it can be found under the Participants list. If you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. We do not have any hands raised at this time.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to make general public comment?
Yes, we do have one person with their hand raised.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Stein, would you go ahead and read the rules for public comment, please?
Be happy to. Thank you. Good morning. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or remain to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently for the commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's non-discrimination policy. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored and enforced, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting. So the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for questions and answers or dialogue. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling, arguing about whether matters remain to county business after the solicitor has made a determination of such, or in any other way attempting to disrupt the meeting, will be grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. As always, the commissioners welcome written feedback and comments at
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, Ms. Francisco, you can call on whoever would like to give public comment.
Thank you. Our first person is Lydia Torres-Kryminski. You are now unmuted.
Good morning.
Lydia, you just have to unmute yourself there, and you should be able to talk.
Start all over?
Yeah, we got you now. We couldn't hear you before. Go ahead and start over, please. Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lydia Torres-Kryminski. I am a Montgomery County Volunteer Long-Term Care Ombudsman. I am again voicing my opposition regarding the decision the Department of Health and Human Services Office of Senior Services has made to outsource the Montgomery County Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program while in the midst of an ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Due to the pandemic, long-term care residents have been in quarantine, lockdowns, and isolation. They've been allowed to see their families face-to-face only through glass windows. Socializing with other resident friends they played bingo with was not an option. Most have gone outside for fresh air. Some residents are not aware that their good resident body has passed due to COVID-19. Consumer Voice, the leading national voice representing consumers related to long-term care, stated in a recent article that when CMS eased visitation restrictions and permitted visits, very quickly they began hearing from family members that their loved ones were almost unrecognizable because of physical and mental decline. Upon reentry, we as ombudsman will witness its devastating effects of lockdown in long-term care facilities. The ombudsman programs capable and experienced staff will be able to then monitor the grief and loss residents have suffered and try their best to give them comfort. However, due to the intent to furlough with the date of July 1, 2021, staff may not be on hand to provide these critical services. Again, I strongly urge the Montgomery County Governor, Government Administration to reconsider and reverse the decision to outsource the long-term care ombudsman program. This is not the time to disrupt this very important work. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other individuals? Ms. Francisco?
Yes, we do have one other person with their hand raised. We will move to John Kryminski.
Good morning.
My name is John Kryminski, and I'm a 21-year resident of Horsham Township. I'm speaking with you today to express my opposition to the outsourcing of the Montgomery County Long-Term Care Ombudsman function. In my professional life, I've had many experiences on both sides of outsourcing relationships. I also served as a corporate risk manager. In my opinion, there are at least two significant and dangerous risks associated with a decision to outsource, and unfortunately, the impact of a negative risk event will fall hardest on the older and disabled residents in 126 long-term care facilities in Monco. The two risks that I refer to are, one, the lack of a comprehensive transition plan between Monco and the outsourcer, and, two, the risk to the reputation of the county for outsourcing a critical government function. With regard to the lack of a transition plan, the RFP asks for the outsourcer to prepare a plan, but it's Montgomery County that should be requiring specific performance criteria from the outsourcer during the transition period. Also, ombudsmen are being furloughed before the transition takes place. The relationships and the knowledge base so important to maintaining service levels will be literally walking out the door when these ombudsmen are most needed to educate and train their replacements. With regard to the second risk, the outsourcing of a core function, Montgomery County must always protect two things: Those that it serves and its good reputation. Montgomery County would be reluctant to outsource other core functions like law enforcement or its prosecutor, so it seems contradictory to outsource the responsibility for the protection of older and disabled citizens. Montgomery County deservedly has an excellent reputation for serving its citizens. This keeps current residents here and draws new residents. No third-party outsourcer should be in a position to endanger our most vulnerable citizens and thereby threaten the good reputation of the county. The nightmares that have occurred in long-term care facilities during the last 13 months are no longer back-page news, and mistakes by an outsourcer will be paid for by Montgomery County. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the April 1, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. All right. We have an announcement this morning about the Monco Trail Challenge from Kristy Goodwin, from our Community Health Program Manager.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me.
Good morning.
We're really excited to kick off the 2021 Monco Trail Challenge. I'm going to share my screen real quick with you. All right. So, the trail challenge for this year will begin on May 1 and run seven months, ending on December 5. If anyone is new to the Monco Trail Challenge, it is truly a great way to be physically active, explore the county, and just have fun. It's free and it's open to all ages. This initiative is made possible by the PA Department of Preventative Health and Health Services Block Grant, and has been a partnership between the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, the Planning Commission, Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites, and the commissioners for the past six years. So, the trail challenge is essentially like a scavenger hunt. We have 15 participating trails, and they each have their own unique symbol. So, one is featured right here. All the symbols are very similar in feature. They just have a different animal assigned to it. And so, the goal is to visit as many trails within that timeline, and then you would just mark what you find, salamander, a hawk, or a fish, and then keep track of your findings. There are three achievement levels for those that are goal-oriented. So, you can look for five trails, 10 trails, or 15 trails within that seven-month time period. This year, we're really excited. We have two new trail additions. The first one is the Perkium and Creek Water Trail. So, this shows is 18 miles- So this shows is 18 miles of just what it sounds like, water. So it really offers a great opportunity to see the county and participate in the trail challenge from a different perspective. The water trail begins just below Green Lane and ends around Oaks. To learn more about the water trail, you can visit perkyomenwatershed.org. So we're really excited to have that as a new feature this year. The second trail is the Schuylkill East Trail, and this is about a one-and-a-half-mile connector trail between two Monco parks. So you can begin either at Lock 60 or Upper Schuylkill Valley Park. Either way, the trail will link those two parks together. This is a really pretty trail, mostly flat, and on one side it's flanked by woods. On the other side, you're going to be right next to the Schuylkill River. So really beautiful trail. I had an opportunity to check it out a few weeks ago with my family. So we're excited about both of these new offerings and looking forward to another really strong year of participation. So each year, we analyze our data and collect feedback from our participants so that we can continue to improve this initiative. So here are some of the results from last year's trail challenge. So in spite of the pandemic and having a shortened timeframe around the 2020 Monco Trail Challenge, we had our second highest year of participation with over 1,600 people registering and just 18, just under 18% completing the goal of 10 trails or more. People really welcomed the opportunity to get outside, so we're really grateful that we were able to launch this last year in spite of the pandemic. And here are some highlights from our end-of-the-year survey. So just about 98% of participants said they would revisit a Parker Trail. And then each year, we always ask, as a result of the Monco Trail Challenge, you know, what have you accomplished? It's about 94% visited a new Parker Trail. Just shy of 90%, learned something new about their community. And we had about 87% say they improved their physical health. And this one really increased about 3%, but 96% said they improved their mental health. And then this is just a snapshot of some of the feedback we received at the end of the challenge in December. So the top one, I enjoyed all the comments we received, but it says the challenge continues to encourage us to visit all the designated trails every year. Even though we know these trails after four years, it's still fun to rediscover them. And I think that's really important. We're going into ours next year. But even if you've been doing it for the past five years, there's always something new to find on the trails. Whether it's a new addition that we put on, or just even having trails that are so long in length, you're probably not going to see 18 or 20 miles, you know, in one shot. So you can always start at a different segment and explore something new. And even if you go at a different time of year, trails or parks, again, they look different depending on the season. And of course, we love to see here that it got the family out and about after being on screens all day. And then this family said they liked it so much that they invested in camping gear and hiking boots for the next year. And so we really hope that this inspires people to sign up and experience the trail challenge for themselves this year. So registration opens today. So anyone who is interested in learning more about the trail challenge or signing up can visit our webpage. It's right here, www.moncopa.org/trailchallenge. So thank you for providing this time to speak about the trail challenge and for your continued support of this initiative. We really appreciate it.
Great. Kristy, thank you so much. This is fantastic. And I just want to give you a special shout-out for not missing a beat last year despite the pandemic. I know you had to reconfigure some things a little bit differently, but I'm not surprised at all that so many people came out. You know, we saw our trails being such a critical recreational opportunity for so many people in this county early in the pandemic when many other traditional exercise locations closed because of the pandemic. So thank you all so much for doing this. And of course, I'm sure Commissioner Lawrence has a few choice words, but he has been a real champion of this effort, and I know he'll get out there again this year. And I'm excited to see the new connector, and gosh, it'd be great to find time to get in the kayak and get on that water trail. So looking forward to that, too. So thanks so much. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Kristy, thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to take the high road this year. As you know, I am a four-time finisher of the trail challenge every year since I've been a commissioner. Plan to make it five this year. I want to thank you for asking me to be an ambassador for the program this year to promote it, so I'm looking forward to that. But I'm so glad that we got the trail challenge in last year because we did see so many more people using our parks and trails and to give them something to look forward to. And people were actually asking about it, you know, when we had to delay it. So looking forward to getting out on the Perkyomen, off to get a kayak or something. I'm assuming we're not supposed to swim that part. But thank you again for all the hard work you do, and it is a great way to get out, explore different parts of the county that you might not typically get to, and experience all our great trails and parks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gale?
Yes, Kristy, thank you for the great update. A couple of years ago, I completed the trail challenge. I had a great time visiting all our beautiful parks across the county. And I encourage all families across the county to participate. It's a fun family activity. It's a healthy way to get outdoors, enjoy the fresh air, and the great scenery we have in Montgomery County. So I'd like to thank the folks on the Planning Commission for making this possible, and also all our park rangers who work hard to maintain our trails and parks and make sure they're enjoyable for everyone to use. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, Kristy. All right, we will move on to resolutions. The first is an authorization to advertise proposed amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Ms. Silver?
Good morning, Commissioners and Staff. Kaylee Silver, Senior Manager for Housing and Homeless Services within Montgomery County's Office of Housing and Community Development. I am here today to request a resolution for a substantial amendment to our 2019 Annual Action Plan in order to reallocate some emergency solutions grant funding we received in order to assist, to respond to, prepare for, and prevent the spread of COVID-19 for people experiencing homelessness. In early spring of 2020, HUD, the Federal Office of Housing and Urban Development, released two rounds of emergency solutions grants to our office, and we presented a funding plan for these funds in August of 2020. Due to some budget revisions and shifting priorities and just a need to continue to respond to the ever-changing crisis of COVID-19, I'm here to re-present some funding reallocations for some balances that we have. So for Emergency Solutions Grant Round One, which we call ESG-CV1, we have a balance of $88,668. And for Round Two, a balance of $360,843. The majority of these funds must be spent by March of 2022. I will share my screen real quick to give a summary of these funds, which will be put up for public comment. So in summary, the funding proposal includes $150,000 in emergency shelter rehab and renovation, particularly for one of our family shelters, to rehab the day center where families are staying so that they have better social distancing opportunities and protections from COVID-19. $41,718 in emergency shelter operations. That includes more cleaning supplies for our emergency shelters, the purchasing of an additional van for one of our family shelters in order to split up the families for more social distancing for transportation to medical appointments and other appointments, as well as cleaner mattresses and beds for more distancing in the shelters. $96,008 for street outreach operations, which includes the purchasing of a van for our dedicated youth street outreach team serving youth experiencing homelessness. The van can then transport these youths to medical appointments, safety, emergency shelter, and such. This funding also includes funding for an integrated health coordinator for our countywide homeless street outreach program run by access services, which will help arrange more COVID-19 testing as well as vaccine coordination for our population experiencing street homelessness. $124,883 for homeless management information system or HMIS expansion. This is our countywide database to help track outcomes and safety for people experiencing homelessness. So this funding would help us hire a temporary HMIS data coordinator for all of our COVID-19 projects, as well as add on 10, at least 10 new agencies and 50 new users to enter data into our database. And lastly, $36,902 in landlord incentives for our rapid rehousing program, particularly to help house more youth experiencing homelessness, get them off the street, perhaps end transience, and offer better opportunities for isolation in their home. So I am, this funding will go live on the website. People can submit public comments through mail, telephone, or email up through April 28. To in order to submit instructions on how to submit a public comment can be found on montcopa.org, and then navigating to the Montgomery County's Office of Housing and Community Development website. Additionally, we will be holding a virtual public hearing on Wednesday, April 28 at 5:00 p.m. And for instructions on how to access this virtual meeting, people can contact the Office of Housing and Community Development at 610-278-3540. After the public comment, we will relook at our funding allocations and then re-present for the full substantial amendment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed activities for funding under the Emergency Solutions Grant Programs to be available for public comment for a period of 15 days, beginning April 19, 2021, and ending on May 4, 2021, with a public hearing to be conducted through virtual electronic means as necessary on April 28, 2021. Be it further resolved that public comment will be accepted by the Board of Commissioners until May 4, 2021, to be followed by final action on the proposed amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Silver. Next, we have authorization of bond issuance for the Montgomery Higher Education and Health Authority. Mr. Stein?
Good morning, and thank you. Yes, the first item up for me would be the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority has requested authorization from the Board of Commissioners to issue $47 million worth of bonds on behalf of the Montgomery County Community College. The money will be used to refund previous issuances as well as numerous upgrades to their various campuses, including an HVAC upgrade, which is apparently passed to for the college. We normally handle these as TFRs, however, given the nature of the Higher Education and Health Authority, they don't have to go through the same processes, but it still requires the approval of the county. But much like with TFRs, this does not in any way pledge or obligate the credit of the county.
All right, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for Montgomery County Community College. Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Stein, now a TFR.
Now a TFR, or two. The first one is on behalf of the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority, which is seeking to issue $31.5 million worth of bonds on behalf of LaSalle University. All those funds will be used for, those funds will be used for refunding of previous issuances as well as capital improvements to their campus in Springfield Township. The Industrial Development Authority held a public meeting on this on March 24, and there were no comments received.
All right. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for LaSalle College High School. Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. And a second TFR, Mr. Stein?
Yes, again, on behalf of the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority, this one on behalf of Exelon Generation Corporation, for $347,030,000. This would be used entirely for refunding, including to refinance bonds issued for the improvements to Limerick Generation Station. Again, the Industrial Development Authority held a meeting on March 24, and there was no comments received.
I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for Exelon Generation Company, LLC. Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any more comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, emergency declaration authorization for COVID-19 extension. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you. I don't believe I need to remind anybody here, but back on March 8 of 2020, the county declared an emergency declaration in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic. We have renewed that multiple times since then. That declaration, which is permitted under the PA Emergency Management Services Code, permits us to cut through a certain amount of red tape. It also allows us to receive reimbursement for certain costs, both from the state and likely under the American Recovery Act. Thus, it is important that we renew these declarations as not only does it allow us to get reimbursements, but it has allowed us to stand up our vaccine clinics in record time, allowing us to undertake projects that would have taken a lot longer without this declaration.
All right, thank you. I will move that we, the Commissioners of Montgomery County, pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Montgomery County. Further, we direct the Montgomery County Office of Public Health and the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster emergency. This declaration shall take effect April 8, 2021, and last for a period of 60 days. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Ms. Washington, I will be asking for a roll call vote on this motion, please. And is there any more comment?
Solicitor Stein, I'd just like to remind everyone, or if you could just remind everyone, that this declaration has nothing to do with business closures or schools opening or any kind of COVID restrictions whatsoever. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Any other board comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Ms. Washington?
Chair Arkush?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Motion passes two to one. Next, we will move on to appointments and reappointments for the Montgomery County Community College Board. I will move to appoint Kimberly Koch and Douglas Weiss, and to reappoint Marcel Grohn and Varsovia Fernandez to the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees for terms to begin immediately and to expire on April 15, 2027, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment. I know Mrs. Kimberly Koch of Whitpain personally. She's an elected official there. personally. She's an elected official there, a schoolteacher, and I think will be a great addition to the board. I had the opportunity to meet virtually with Doug Weiss, and I think will be another fine addition to the board. And then the two reappointments, the Montgomery County Community College Board's, one of our most important institutions, and these board members work hard, and they've worked hard during this past year to keep the college moving forward. So I want to thank Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Groen for their service as well, and for their willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. I certainly concur with your thanks. Any other board comment?
I have comment, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gail.
I'll request a roll call vote on these appointments and reappointments. There's an individual being reappointed, Marcel Groen, who's the former chair of the Montgomery County Democrat Committee and former chairman of the Pennsylvania Democrat Party. So that's a highly political background, and I've been consistent throughout my years as commissioner to oppose political appointments to citizen advisory boards, whether they are of Republican affiliation or Democrat affiliation. I think we should keep politics out of these boards and commissions as much as possible, and especially the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees, which was just mentioned as a very important board. So I would request a roll call vote.
All right, any other board comment? All right, hearing none, Ms. Washington?
Chair Arkush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. O'Malley, we will move on to advertisements, bids, and RFPs.
One, a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for bridge construction services at Sunrise Mill. The successful responder will provide construction and rehabilitation services for the old Nefertu Road Bridge located on the county-owned Sunrise Mill property. Contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of the planning commission for construction services on the Penny Pack Trail. The successful responder will provide safety upgrades to the Turwood Road Crossing Signal. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, RFP on behalf of the Correctional Facility and Youth Center for Medical Care Services. The successful responder will provide medical, dental, and psychiatric healthcare services to adult inmates and adolescents. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. There's also a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for Phase II construction services. The successful responder will provide construction services for Phase II of the Montgomery County Justice Center project. Phase II includes construction of the Justice Center expansion. Contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of bids and an RFP, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
I just have a question to clarify. Does this include the Justice Center RFP, this motion?
It does.
Okay. I'll request a roll call vote.
Okay. Any other board comment? All right, hearing none, then we'll move to a vote. Ms. Washington?
Chair Arkush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries, two to one. All right, awards of contract, Ms. O'Malley.
One, a contract award, assets and infrastructure, Norfolk Southern Railway Company, a Norfolk, Virginia, $23,511.18. Contract provides right-of-way access for necessary alterations to Butler Pike and culverts adjacent to and under Norfolk Southern Railway. Access includes right-of-way for installation, maintenance, operation, and removal of Butler Pike culverts. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure inspection services, TRC Engineers Incorporated of New York, New York, $87,250.20. Contract provides for construction inspection services for the old Nefertu Road Bridge over Swamp Creek, also known as Sunrise Mill Bridge in Upper Frederick Township. RFP 2106 was viewed by 37 providers with eight responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Three, contract award, Health and Human Services Classroom Program, Paxus Institute Incorporated of Tucson, Arizona, $266,700. Contract provides an evidence-based classroom management strategy, system, or program for the prevention of school violence and antisocial behaviors. RFP 2041 was viewed by 12 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Four, contract award, Health and Human Services Case Management Services, multiple providers, $3,999,948. Contract provides drug and alcohol outpatient case management and recovery support services for the western, eastern, and central regions of the county. RFP 2063 was viewed by 32 providers with five responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated providers. Contracts are for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Providers are Western Region Creative Health Services Incorporated of Pottstown, PA; Eastern and Central Regions, Godenzia Incorporated of Norristown, PA. Five, contract award, Health and Human Services Case Management Services, Penfildation Incorporated of Sellersville, PA, $493,737. Contract provides drug and alcohol outpatient case management and recovery support services for the northeastern region of the county. RFP 2101 was viewed by 23 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contracts are for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Six, contract renewal, public safety, record management system, CSI Technology Group of Keesby, New Jersey, $302,550. Contract provides a countywide law enforcement record management system. System allows sharing of information among all county criminal justice agencies. Renewal is valid for the period of 5/14/2021 to 5/13/2022. Seven, contract renewal, multiple departments, title services, multiple providers. Contract provides title search, title insurance commitments, and final policies, and closing services for various county departments on an as-needed basis. This is the fourth renewal of four available optional renewals. Firms, Diversified Settlement Services Incorporated of Bristol, PA; Tri-State Parial Legal Service of Pittsburgh, PA; Commerce Abstract Company Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA; Elkins Park Abstract Company of Elkins Park, PA; Zedelde National Title Group of Detroit, Michigan; First American Abstract of PA; LLC of Lancaster, PA. Eight, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure equipment, Alamo Sales Corporation of Sequin, Texas, No Cost. Original contract provided equipment used by the Parks and Storke sites and the Roads and Bridges divisions from various suppliers. Amendment reassigned the award of Alamo Arm Mower from John Deere Shared Services to equipment manufacturer, Alamo Sales Corporation. There is no change in the equipment cost amount. Nine, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure engineering, Whitney Bailey Cox and McNagny, LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, $5,260. Contract provides for a qualified engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the replacement of county bridge number 77, Plymouth Road over Wissa Hicken Creek in Delaware Gwinnett Township. Amendment provides additional work to be performed, which will include updating the design and contract plans to include manual for assessing safety hardware compliant barrier and barrier transitions. Ten, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, Rumple, Klepper, and Call, LLP of King of Prussia, PA, $103,450.1. Contract provides engineering services for the reconstruction of county-owned Ridge Pike from Butler Pike to Crescent Avenue in White Marsh Township. Amendment provides an archaeological investigation, additional survey, and design between Butler Pike and Harmon Avenue, expanded data collection for safety review submission, and coordination and design of a potential new traffic signal at the White Marsh Senior Village. Amendment also provides an extension of time for the project completion through March 25, 2022. Eleven, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, Pinoni Associates Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, No Cost. Contract provides engineering design and right-of-way services for the Ridge Pike widening and reconstruction project in Plymouth Township. Amendment provides a no-cost time extension of the contract through June 30, 2022, for the completion of Task Two, which provides final design services between Belvoir Road and Regal Drive, and Tasks Five and Six, which provide final design services and right-of-way acquisition of the project area between Regal Drive and Chemical Road. Twelve, contract rescind and re-award, Cabling Services, Atlantic Coast Communications NJ Incorporated of Pensacola, New Jersey, $455,844. Contract provides three-year voice and data cabling services for county-owned facilities as per specification 6433. Rescind award to PT Controls of Malvern, PA. One contract, five contract renewals, and three amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to awards of contract under emergency procurement for COVID-19.
Contracts provide various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. One, response equipment, Health and Human Services, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $194,545.75. Contract provides computer equipment and accessories for the vaccination sites. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, response equipment, Health and Human Services, Uline Incorporated of Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, $30,803.8. Contract provides setup items necessary to outfit the vaccination sites for service. Items include crowd control posts, shelving, wall clogs, and trash cans. Three, response services, Zoom Video Communications Incorporated of San Jose, California, $60,385.50. Contract provides 380 Zoom enterprise licenses and five room connector subscriptions for a one-year term. Four, response supplies, Health and Human Services, Safeware Incorporated of Lanham, Maryland, $31,324. Contract provides disinfectant spray and sharp containers for the vaccination sites. Supplies are available through an Omni Partners US Communities Cooperative contract. Five, response services amendment, Health and Human Services, Johnson Controls, York Service of Horsham, PA, $61,395. Contract provides for chiller and cooling tower maintenance and repairs at the King of Prussia Mall vaccination site. Amendment provides additional corrective work required to make units fully operational. Six, response services amendment, Health and Human Services, contact tracing, multiple providers. Contract renewals approved 11/19/2020 provide contact tracing services in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Amendments provide increased services required to perform contact tracing. Providers are Aklamo of Norristown, PA; Family Services of Montgomery County of Eagleville, PA; VNA Community Services of Abington, PA.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, some awards for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Okay. One, a contract award, equipment, Tough Rugged Laptops of Anaheim, California, $57,802.82. Contract provides 50 refurbished Panasonic Toughbook laptops. Laptops will be used by Delaware County for mobile data terminals. Two, contract award, software licenses, CDW Government of Vernon Hill, Illinois, $74,051.96. Contract provides 16 Microsoft Windows Server licenses for Delaware County. Licenses are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Three, contract award, equipment, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $58,995.78. Contract provides routers, antennas, and associated hardware for Montgomery County. Equipment will enable police, fire, and EMS vehicles to be updated with new mobile data connectivity equipment. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any closing commissioners' comments? Hearing none, then I will remind everyone that we have an election board meeting on Monday, April 19, 2021, at 11:00 a.m. That will be a virtual meeting, and that our next Commissioners' meeting, which will also be virtual, will be May 6, 2021. I will move to adjourn the April 15, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned, and we'll move into Salary Board. I see Controller Sanchez is with us, and Ms. Perdue. Good morning to both of you. Ms. Francisco, is there any public comment on Salary Board?
We do not have anyone with their hand raised at this time.
Okay, then, Ms. Perdue, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, April 14, 2021, at 3:35 p.m. Of note, we have one retiree, Karen Paul, from District Justice after 21 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Is there a motion to approve the April 15, 2021 Salary Board presentation, as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the April 15, 2021, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.